Good, how are you?
How many two little girls take their classes?
I don't know.
What's that? Running lessons, how often does she go running?
Oh, about, mm, three, four days a week.
That's awful.
Yeah.
Wow, well, one she's good.
Should we go ahead and get started?
You have forums technically, you can.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, do you have a forum, Floyd?
We have a forum.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda is presentations. Have any presentations and, um, next item is review and approval of the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Pages one through three.
I had one change I wanted to make, um, well, they were talking about, uh, cameras, not the cameras, those signs, the video signs.
Mm-hmm.
Not a video though.
You mean the solar powered signs?
The speed signs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, it was suggested that they sell them.
Yes.
And the way it's written up, it sounds like I suggested, and I did not suggest it.
Okay.
I'm gonna call who did, but...
The mayor did, because I went back and looked at it.
Alright.
I did say I agreed with it, but then I later rescinded that one, and they said it wasn't, it was officious of the city, I thought maybe it wasn't a good idea.
So we can scratch out Paulie's name and put in council.
No, no name was put there, it was just included after my comments, it was included like it was in my comments.
Alright, we can change it so that reads council, uh, recommended selling the sign. We can do that.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, council didn't really, I mean, we didn't, I think we were just discussing it, we weren't...
Well, we can just scratch out the sentence altogether, I mean, it's council's decision.
Yeah. Let's do that. How about...
It'll be under page two of the minutes, discussion of received quotes.
Taking out the old sign which is in storage could be offered for sale?
Yeah.
Just to scratch out that sentence, the old sign which is in storage.
Okay.
Just scratch out those sentences.
How's your... You got a change?
Yeah, I don't know if it was, if it was, can be considered new business or not, but didn't we discuss the toilet situation over here at home and down?
We did, that's under the add-in report.
Okay, alright, I missed that, alright. I make a motion to be accepted as a, as modified.
Okay, Tom made a motion, Paulie seconded, all in favor. Unanimous. Alright, next item is a public hearing, and we don't have anything for that. Um, next item on the agenda is new business, um, so you'll find in your packet an updated seatbelt policy.
So to give a little bit of clarity, you already have a seatbelt policy.
Right.
Julie went to training, uh, required training for her role as the safety officer for the town. And it was recommended at that point that we have to update our seatbelt policy because we have a new mayor. Last time it was in, Lloyd was mayor, now it's Elizabeth, so they want us to update it, reflecting her signature. So it's really basically where your seatbelt, here's the policy to prove it.
So will the motion further out?
We need a...
Motion to accept it.
I make a motion to accept the new approved policy, seatbelt policy.
You what?
I make a motion to accept the new seatbelt.
I thought you said approved, okay, another, I second your motion.
Okay, Tom made a motion, Paulie seconded, all in favor. Unanimous.
Alex is on his way.
Oh.
We just gotta text Alex is on his way.
Well, okay, well, he may be walking in right as we finish, but...
He may be.
Okay, so old business, um, we have the Wellsburg station paving update.
Yes. So that's taking up the lion's share of what's in your agenda packet. But as you'll recall, earlier this year, we were, um, informed that Coeita County had started paving Wellsburg. They've gone into our town territory part. So, uh, they had a presentation here, and the town went ahead and agreed to utilize all LMID or local maintenance improvement grants, and then supplement the payment with ARPA funds. On page seven of your packet, you'll see how it had been broken down. The total for this work is seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. We have twenty thousand in LMID funds that we can spend, and then you can see how it broke down, the rest of it with ARPA funds. And the only reason I'm bringing it to you is I already have it proven, and I wanted you to see it so that you can now see for sure what those true dollar amounts are. Last time they were here, it was estimated dollar amount, so now you have the real deal. Does that make sense? And that's really just the reason I brought it forward, so there's no miscommunication of how we're spending this money.
When we discussed this over the last couple of meetings, we, the question was asked if we were making sure we did not pay to have everything paved in Wellsburg.
Correct.
This map includes some things, the map of your red errors includes some things that are not ours, I want to make this, again, for the record, we're not paying for...
We are.
County part of the subdivision.
We are not, no, we're not paying for what is not ours, and that's part of what they also provided to us, is how they were able to break it down.
Okay.
And again, uh, you guys gave a not to exceed amount, this went over it by one dollar and eleven cents. So, you know, I think we're all in good shape, I just wanna make sure you guys are good. Make sure there's no confusions off of what we got today.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause with your, I don't even really think I need an approval at this point, but just letting you know because my next check will include this check and to pay for it. Okay?
Okay, um, so the next item is the furniture quotes on pages thirty-three through thirty-six.
And I'm gonna turn this over to Julie and let her talk about it.
Okay, I, I wanna give you, um, a bird's eye view of what our office looks like. Starting with the reception area, which used to be the reception area, but now it's where Angie sits.
And can I, before she goes, would it be acceptable to you guys if you actually went and just saw what we're talking about? Just to see it. Can I go look at it right now? Or you can just hear what she has to say, either way, it'll be right.
You may wanna look at it after I tell you what, what we have.
Is that the thing that's in the minutes? I mean, in the packet?
No, no, this is...
You had a pretty thorough thing in the packet.
I wrote it up in the packet, and I've asked for this on a minute.
Yeah, okay.
If you want me to.
Yes, please continue.
Okay. Uh, Angie sits at a wooden table that was made by Tony Brown, was supposed to be an entry table. It is made out of rough planks, she has no privacy, um, she has a table lamp for lighting. She has a small fiber board, wobbly two drawer file cabinet with no locks. She has no privacy at her desk, leaving her files, uh, her customer information unsecured. Her customers sit in rolling chairs that were meant for the entry area and not to be an office space. Floyd area has broken molding around his desk that has been glued several times. His file cabinets are broken, he has tape keeping the drawers closed. There are no inside tracks to keep the files in place and no locks on the drawers. He has three small two drawer cabinets that are falling apart, although one is fireproof, it has no inner rails to contain files. There are two bookcases with sagging shelves containing files. There is no security in the area, everything is open. We have customer information, we have business information, we have employee information. There is a lateral file in the room that is not fireproof. This contains old accounts receivable and accounts payable. Also stationary office and cleaning supplies for the office area, again, broken inside, no rails to be used as a proper filing cabinet. We have nowhere to hang our coats. His chair is from Amazon, his guest chairs are from probably the seventies, they're not sturdy, they're wobbly, one arm comes apart. And basically, nothing matches. My area is a collection of storage, useless file cabinets that haven't been looked at in more than five years. I have a refrigerator, a vacuum cleaner, a podium, light bulbs, office supplies, tools. I am crammed into a dark corner with my back to whoever enters the room. Um, my desk is an old corner desk from someone's home. I have no filing cabinets, I brought in a plastic cabinet from home with drawers to help, to help me keep my files. It's a pla- and I have a plastic box containing my old files from previous years. There is one file cabinet next to me that is fireproof and functional, it contains all of the minutes and other legal documents. My chair is from Amazon and my light is from my house. When I have business customers in for their business licenses or permits, my back is to them, they have nowhere to formally sit or write. The mayor's office consists of a desk, also from probably the seventies, facing the back wall, it's very dark. There is a yellow farmhouse table and cheap rolling chairs from Amazon. We have old computer equipment, old files piled high in boxes, maps and blueprints, assorted other office paraphernalia without a proper home. We cleaned it out quite a bit, it's in better shape than what it was. So, that is kinda it. So, our goal is to have a professional office for our staff and for our town. We feel it doesn't put a professional face forward, and it's not ergonomic in any way, shape or form.
I think, um, that it's important for us, well, for you all, to feel like you have the space and everything necessary to perform. I think that we need to, to go with one of these quotes. Personally, I like the one with the fireproof file cabinets. Uh, I think that's important.
I don't know about the floors last time, which I thought was a good idea, but I don't even...
Well, we can work on the floors, but, you know, if we go ahead and, if we go ahead and do this, they can get, working on it and order the furniture and everything, like I'm sure, I don't know how long it takes to get, but...
I believe they said about six weeks, I think is what they said.
It may take us two months to get floor quotes.
Julie, was it six weeks that they said?
Yeah, he said usually it's a six week, um, they put it together, uh, custom. Um, Mr. Cook explained that a lot of the, the furniture comes from a place that Georgia does a lot of business with.
Okay.
So it is, um, associated with a Georgia state discount.
Okay.
And I noted that in quote, but he said a lot of it is custom made.
So a couple of things that may have been missed in this as well, I think Julie did great, but a couple of things to... If this is approved, and ones we're recommending is Cook's office equipment, that's the first quote you see, thirty-eight thousand. If it's approved, part of it is they will come in and they're going to install all the furniture and bring it out. Also, the old furniture we have already here, they're gonna take away, it's gone, that's a part of it too. Another ongoing issue for us has been office space. And so, the mayor's office will be, will remain a mayor's office, but frankly, it hasn't been used as such for several years now. Usually, mayor does work, uh, from the home, maybe some off-site location. So, some of the storage that we have can go in there. The other part will be, we have a, in this adjacent building to us, we have a, a room that used to have tables and chairs in it. Part of this, you'll see, is an installation of shelves, it would be, I think, the second to last line around about the total. Shelves for our new records room, that room that used to have tables and chairs in it becomes a new records room. It'll have its own individual lock, only two people, uh, one for redundancy will have access in and out of there. It won't be records that are so important that if somebody should break in, that we're gonna have a crisis, but it's gonna be those records that we do need to keep, that do need some measure of protection, they can go out there and use that room as a new storage room. And they will come and install and get that ready as well. So perhaps old maps or things that we do need to keep that aren't gonna be as high priority or high security, we can put out there as well. So I think that's a new part too, and it helps to alleviate some of the storage issues that we have also.
Is there anything in the, in the, uh, purple eyesore that you would stick away?
None of our records that I'm aware of, no records I'm aware of, but we do have records... But Tom, I will say, we do have records that are in the old storage closet in here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have these sort of scattered because we're just trying to, as we need room, we can put them in.
The quilter's cab, um, has a, have a closet right here, they have up on the high, high shelf, they have all boxes in there, that's really nice.
And also in this little utility room back here, it has records as well. So this will help alleviate some of those storage needs as well.
When you talk about putting storage in, using the mayor's office for part of the storage, you're talking about the filing cabinets in there basically.
No, there'll, there'll be, uh, one lateral file cabinet in the mayor's office. Um, there'll be a peninsula desk with, you know, with room for a computer, like if mayor or you wanna have a meeting. It'll be a peninsula, peninsula style desk, which is oval. And then in the corner, there'll be a table with chairs, so you could move from the peninsula desk to a small round table. And it's, you know, it'd be a professional area to have a meeting, impromptu meeting or vendor meeting or whatever. It'll be nice.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the Cook's office equipment offer.
This solves your, uh, storage needs, we feel like? Uh, I think it'll go a long way, I think so, but how, how far it'll go? Ninety percent? I think probably ninety, eighty, but I think it'll go a long way, I do.
I'm assuming there's a lot of things you can cull out.
Yeah.
It's a matter of time, the answer is yes, it's just a matter of time, it's a matter of going through and trying to see what can be called out, yes.
Okay.
My biggest concern with just carte blanche is I really don't know what's in so many of them without just going one by one, and that just takes time.
I think the history of, in, in my office space, there's, uh, four file cabinets, uh, upright standing, um, they're called convenience files. And when Dana was here, she had a college student come in and help her with the filing. We haven't touched those.
Yeah.
So that needs to be totally pulled out, yeah.
But for now, at least you can put them in banker's boxes and at least hold them a little bit until you get time to go through them.
Right.
Or as you're putting in banker boxes, you gotta real sense of what you really need to keep.
Yeah, and we have guidelines from the state, how long we have to keep records, record retention, so it'll be a great system once it happens.
Okay, so Tom made a motion to accept the Cook's quote.
Another question, fifteen thousand, so that's not really broken down in here, but that's gonna cover wall to wall from here to the back desk.
Right.
Yes.
Small tables, chairs.
Chairs are broken out.
It would fix Angie's office.
Every room is getting a real happen.
Every room, every single room.
And shelves and the storage, the new storage area to keep records.
And the motion would also need to be utilizing ARPA funds for this too.
Okay.
Well, to repeat, I recommend we accept the Cook's quote and pay for it with ARPA.
Okay.
So Tom made a motion to accept the Cook's quote and use ARPA funds?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
And Alex had the second, all in favor. Unanimous. Alright.
There we go. We go for it, Jules.
Yeah. Um, so the next thing on the agenda is couple of comments. Any comments from the council? Alright, Paulie of the council, you wanna start, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, we communicated with the Harbors Per Valley about, uh, getting that corporate out, letting them use our outside.
We have communicated with them, we have an agreement that we've also written up, that agreement will be coming on your next agenda, uh, for your formal proposal.
For them to access.
For them to do what they need to do, but I've already verbally given them the go-ahead.
What will you do, just give me, put a lock on the gate?
We have a code already, and, well, they have the ability to come in and out of the gate to begin with, and we've also given them the code so they can utilize it.
Second thing is, have we gotten that Mullins property next to the triangle?
Pardon?
The Mullins property across the street from the triangle on Tierney?
We're closing on that Friday.
Okay, I just, the sign doesn't...
Floyd got, we finally got the, uh, report, uh, from the environmentalists that everything was okay, uh, last Friday, so we scheduled the closing for Friday, and Elizabeth's gonna sign the closing papers to...
Good, okay, I just noticed the sign was, was still up, and usually these guys, these cursed wheelers...
Well, and y'all will have to...
Contracts are having a...
We're talking about it in public, which y'all will, uh, we're gonna close Friday, but that's technically a, uh, executive session issue, but we're gonna close Friday, but we won't get y'all to approve it or in open session until we actually close, so...
Okay, well, I withdraw the comment then. Alright, the last thing I have, do we want, at this point in time, do we wanna address moving the purple eyesore?
Sure.
What's in it?
Trash.
Junk.
Everything, old boards?
You would die if you saw the inside.
Old signs, old chairs, anything, anything and everything.
Used wood, um, scrap wood.
Stuff from the library too.
I think the ping pong tables in there, that's, that's quite big stuff in there.
There's some, uh, shit, there's some shells from the library that, uh, we don't need in the library. Well, I guess, you know, if we, if we do it, we'll just, what, have to get a dumpster and transfer anything from the, from there to the dumpster, or do we wanna sell the thing, or what?
I don't know how that works.
Uh, I don't know how it works right now, have to look into it. How big is the container, twenty foot?
Uh...
No, it's about, it's a regular...
Forty foot?
Pretty big, that's a big old thing.
Yeah.
I think those go for about three grand in decent shape, two, three grand.
I think it's a decent shape, it's just...
Is it weatherproof still?
It doesn't, it doesn't, I don't have it in there as well.
Yeah, it's just not really...
And it's got, it's got a vent on the top too, they put a, a vent bay on the top, so it's been modified.
So we own it and we don't rent it, that's happened following me.
Yeah.
So we own that one.
Yeah.
Unless someone else...
Unless somebody else, as long as I'm the one that owns it.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you a sixty-four thousand dollar question, is there any value in having it sitting right there?
Well, I think that's the eye of the beholder, right? I mean, right now it's all eclectic, it's not holding any of our records.
Yeah, we're not using it.
Um, I think that it has been used by Team Hungary, and sometimes during Christmas events, they'll put Christmas supplies in there, that kind of thing, kinda hold it over. But I mean, that's seasonal, so if you ask me, is there any benefit in it, very little.
Okay.
But, I mean, I never, I'll just put it this way, I've been here since twenty-one, and I think I've actually gone to that, that container and walked inside it maybe three times in my life. I mean, I never used it.
We've got a couple, like, the Christmas trees are in there, but I mean, we could probably easily store those and...
Well, if you, if you keep it, if you keep it and move it over to the, to the tank, tank lot.
Mm-hmm.
Then you can still leave the Christmas trees in or anything that you, that you want to keep in it, it's not like you ain't gotta get rid of it.
I think that idea on top of that, paint it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could clean it out and do a revamp on it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Do a renewal of some kind or something.
I can say that what...
Maybe, I don't know, I could take a look.
It's, um, part of the fence is involved.
Oh, God.
Like the edge, there's a, there's a, um, a wooden ramp that was built.
Right.
And it's right up against the fence, and it looks like it may damage the fence in a certain way. You know, if something, if, how are they gonna get it out? How are they gonna pull it, is they gonna pull it out, right?
Yeah.
Well, you get, you get a big, a big front end loader.
Yeah, you'd have, you'll have to look at it, because when I looked at it, I was concerned about the fence.
I wouldn't let that...
Yeah, give Alex the key so you can check it out.
Alright, yeah.
I wouldn't let anything like that, you know, uh, help make our decision for us, because if we're gonna get it out, we'll, we'll get it out somehow, this is America.
Tear it out.
We can eat it out here. You got it in there, you can get it out now.
Well, I don't have any ready answers on whether it will take to get that out of there, but we can certainly start looking and getting it out.
How do we, how do we proceed?
We could also...
Just hurt, I guess, call the truck company, my fault, it's call truck company and say, hey, can you come pull this thing, right?
Maybe cargo companies that sell those and deliver them, I mean, they come in.
Yeah, and just come and pull this thing.
Same as the shit guys, they'll come pick it up, put it on the back of the truck, take it wherever.
And that may not be a bad idea, just take it over to the tank lot and drop it, and just say, here it is in case we ever need it.
You reckon we can get it into the tank lot?
Well, I don't know, but I think we can ask.
Well, anybody, anybody that we line, try to line up to have to go over and get it, let, let's take it to the tank lot and say, okay, can you, can you get it in there?
Can you walk it in?
Yeah, because that road is, and there's, that's gonna require some trees to be cut down.
I was just in North Carolina and I saw a mobile home atop the mountain. I figure if that's the case, and they can pull that off, for sure, we can get this thing from here to there.
What?
But, yeah.
But that, you know, getting it into the tank lot, back to the back of the tank lot, that, that's not gonna, it's not just a matter of, okay, fine, there's the driveway.
Right.
Because it's, I mean...
It's grown up and it's all everything, right.
And there, like I said, there are a lot of trees that are, you know, approaching on the driveway, which is no big deal. But I don't even, I don't even know that the driveway can handle it, can handle the truck taking in there.
I don't know, only we can just ask, we can start asking, and then we'll know better at that point.
You wanna try to see if, what, what, what is it worth, does somebody would buy it?
I, I guess, talk to a truck company too, and we'll find out, you know, do they even buy it, who buys them, I don't, yeah, I'm just...
Somebody's gonna buy it.
Um, uh...
Pardon?
I said, you could put it on Facebook Marketplace and someone will buy it, if someone's guaranteed.
Will they buy it purple?
I'm sure somebody will buy it, I just, I just don't know, I don't know what they go for, I don't know any of that, so it'll just have to look into, find out on Facebook. But we can take a look into it and come back with that.
Maybe put it on, maybe have something for the October reading or something.
Alright, Ed Menowen might like to see it repainted, to, you can paint it to where it blends in.
Clean it out.
And cleaned out.
That was definitely a red purple.
Maybe it could get a different color too.
Yeah. You'd be surprised, I mean, a thanks prayer and...
Orange like his hat.
Thanks prayer, yeah, an hour, you can change the color of it.
Alex, they're talking about putting it orange like your hat, you did with that?
But my business lives on the side of the...
That's all, that's all that I had.
Okay.
Okay.
Paulie, Alex?
Uh, I just read about the seatbelt policies, I'm bringing up to date on that, and, no, I don't think I have anything else that's coming to mind.
Wellsburg was just to kinda let you guys know how funding will break down off that.
That reminds me, so what, so we approved the furniture, we paid for the rooms, whereabouts, is that ten thousand dollars gonna be left in our ARPA budget?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that, 'cause I have that in my register.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's all I had.
Okay, cool.
So I guess my turn?
Yep.
Alright, so a couple of things, um, Coeita County Public Works, Tom, he'll recall, he was here not so long ago. He's still looking into the list of projects that were given.
Okay.
Uh, he has asked for a couple more weeks, uh, to come back with an answer. So, that's where we are with that, they are still aware, they're still working on it, they're gonna come back with an answer, I would suspect in the next couple of weeks. To answer questions from Alex about the remaining funds, given that we're paying for Wellsburg and now we have approval for the furniture, that leaves a total of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-one of ARPA funds that are still unallocated and still unspent. Okay? And reminder, as you already know, you have to spend it by December thirty-one or allocate it by December thirty-one. I think one of the biggest issues we still have ongoing, and there is a lot, we can talk about floors, we can talk about whatever, but I think security is a big issue. Uh, I'm going back and starting to pull some of the old quotes I've received for security. They're dated, so I don't have real faith that they're up to date and current. But, they're go, it's gonna be money, it's gonna cost, and the, in my mind, why I have figured is within the next month or so, when I get these new quotes updated, take the remaining eight thousand, six fifty-one... take the remaining eight thousand six fifty-one of ARPA and allocate it towards security, and that means security on your doors, cameras, cameras out in the park, over the library. Something should happen, we have a fire, we have a break-in, we're aware of it, any of the additional costs, uh, for setting up cameras, for instance, could come out of your SPOS twenty nineteen. The justification for that is that SPOS requires, uh, different types of spend, you can only spend it on certain reasons, part of it is cultural, historical, um, in community buildings, and I would think putting security out at your parks, pavilion and et cetera would qualify, so I would think that pretty soon you're gonna start getting quotes for approval to go ahead and allocate and or spend the remaining of this ARPA, and then to supplement any additional cost with SPOS twenty nineteen. I suspect that's coming probably October or November, they're giving you a heads up on that, unless there's something else missing that you would like me to turn my focus on.
Well, you've got that possibility, and it's got, been a lot of merit to it, you've also got the idea of doing something with these floors.
Mm-hmm.
And we also have the situation with regards to the door outside, so that's a, that's a, that's a third deal, now, that's not to say we can't do security and then use the SPOS to fix that door, to, to, to rebuild that entryway, basically.
Right.
You're talking about the front, huh?
Yeah.
No, the door is sort of the same game we've had with several of these other vendors, you go out for quotes, and they show up and say, we'll get you a quote, and then they help you with a quote. So, but I, I actually, I like the idea, 'cause I think.
Can we contact them and ask them, could, would they honor the previous quote?
Well, that's what I need to talk to them about too, and, and then I suspect, given the dates on these quotes that I have, the answer is probably no, but I'm gonna ask them that too.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna go in there and say, since you won't, I'm just gonna ask them, hey, I have this, you know, what do you want?
Yeah, we're still on right there.
And see what they go with. Mm-hmm.
For the door?
Uh, for the, for the security in this case, we have not received any quotes for the door, we've tried, and every one of them haven't provided it yet.
Alright, y'all wanna get a quote on the, on putting in new doors and with new locks, or you wanna try to fix those locks on that door?
No, we don't wanna fix the locks.
No, I think we need to just change the doors out, those are residential doors, those are residential doors, and beyond that, um, the locking mechanism on those doors is on the outside, and that seems to be a part of the problem.
Yeah.
Bang into them, whatever, then we get the call that the doors won't lock.
Well, I can get two quotes.
Okay.
If you can work on that, that'd be great.
Okay, and, but I need to know if, you know, do you have an idea of where you would get the industrial doors?
Well, I would say that we went to, I wanna say four different door companies, if memory serves right, all of them came out, and all of them said, hey, those are residential doors, they're not gonna do what you're asking them to do, they need to be commercial, and then they said that we need to probably go for contractors, then they said, we're gonna come back and give you quotes anyway, and then they never did. So this may not be a door company we're looking at, maybe going after a contractor, and saying, what can they?
And that contractor's gonna need to know the commercial doors.
And then I would say this.
And it's exactly what we need.
Yeah.
As an aside, I'm thinking about Nick, and I'm thinking about Louis.
Okay, yeah, just give us some quotes, that'd be great.
I need some quotes off of that, and it's actually, uh, probably, actually need three quotes not two, need to have.
Have we had, uh, Justin, with, is the name Justin?
I don't recognize.
Big guy, red beard.
Yeah, Justin Halford.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Justin Halford, no, I haven't spoken to him.
Okay. I gotta reach out to him and see if he wants to come take a look.
Okay.
He's here pretty often at the meeting.
That's right.
He comes to DDA and he's like, um, and I think we need to emphasize that they need to be commercial doors, so we don't run into this process again.
Right, commercial.
Um, yeah.
And as far as floors are concerned, I think SPOS nineteen funds, the, again, this is a community center.
Yeah.
And that's part of it was for a community building, I think you can lose SPOS funds or straight out and fix your floors too.
Yeah.
But for me, the thing that keeps me awake and concerned is security, you know, that's the thing that bothers me, so if I would prioritize, I would say security, and then floors and doors would probably come in second and third, not as small, but security wise.
You gotta do all of it.
The security hits it the top.
Yeah, they're awful.
And we're in this place out.
Right, exactly.
My budget and.
Exactly, so I think, yeah, they're all three are meeting critical, right?
Well, the general contractor may be able to, you know, if they're looking for work, they could certainly put all of that together.
Yeah.
Uh, they could itemize it separately, but anyone who can, general contractor, those doors can.
Fix the floors.
Yeah, Tom, Steve, um, or we could ask Justin too, get, we, you know, to include the door, the floors as well.
He's involved with a lot of local stuff, so it's probably worth asking for help.
We've got another, I've, I've got a floor company, a guy that does carpet and flooring, two people might have to take a look at the floors for us.
Can I ask, uh, since we're talking about floors, one of the things that has come up in the past is the floor that was put in here, obviously it's breaking down, it's cracking, it's used a lot. And, in talking to some of the floor companies who did come in, they said what had been put down was relatively cheap, and that's why it's falling apart. Um, one of the things Julie and I saw, we went to, where was it, Comfort, I think, they had a room sewed into this, and they didn't have any of this type flooring on, what they had was basically polished concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
And it looked great, and it was supposed to be sustainable, we brought that idea up about a year or so ago, never made the council, just, you know, and the basic retreat that we had is, well, we had dance classes in here, and they're gonna slip and fall and bust themselves in concrete.
And they're, and they're not gonna slip and fall, wow.
Well, they have, that's the thing, they, I, I've spoken to Ms. Rachel after the cleaning lady came in, right?
Yeah.
And she said that somebody fell and somebody slipped, and luckily they didn't get hurt, so they'll slip on this too, you're right, Tom.
Well, there are compounds, there are fluorid, fluoride-based compounds you can put on cement, that, that, they do it in air orps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every, every, if you go to, like, rest, you go to the avenues of the Peachtree City, every single one of those buildings over there, with the exception of a couple of women's stores, have all got cement floors.
Right.
With an acid treatment on it that.
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's called, well, I can't think of the name.
My husband used to, my husband was a contractor, so he did those floors for people too.
The slipping has to be an issue for those people, and I know you can, you can address that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I like the idea of the, the cement floor, I've used it a couple, done, done a couple times in my houses, and they, and they, they look great, if you go over, like I said, to the avenues, look at those doors, you'll see what I'm talking about, they're, they're multi-colored, and it looks like stone.
So can we shoot for that and get out of this, talk about laminate and just say, let's turn this into a, a cement floor, polished cement, and let's go with it?
Yeah.
And start getting quotes off of that instead?
Yeah.
I like that too.
Okay, then I think I've got council agreeing.
That, that product's called Chemico.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a hydrochloric acid wash that etches into the cement a quarter of an inch, I'm sorry, an eighth of an inch, and it has a stain with it.
Okay.
My husband did a, a studio for an artist, and it came out gorgeous.
My basement at home is that way, and my, and my, my basement from two houses goes that way, and it's, I mean, it, it's gorgeous, it really is.
And then I think that's how we ought to go, start looking at getting a cement floor, it's durable, better looking, what's wrong?
I will warn you about this, and, and it just, when you, when you, when they take it up, they're gonna have to grind into the cement that's there, or lay a new layer of real thin cement over it, because it, it will not, the acid wash of acid stain will not adhere to, um, cured, uh, what, what's the word?
Glue?
Well, it won't adhere to the glue, but it won't adhere, if you put a, um, a spray on it to, to cure it, it won't, it won't adhere to the cement, it wants to be cured, so you have to put it, either dig down to the old cement and put new cement on top that's not cured.
I imagine that if there's any divots in the floor, or, you know what I mean, like, divots in the concrete, they have to smooth that out too.
Oh, they don't.
Don't?
No, I had a, I had a crack that ran through my floor, you put it down, and it looks like two slabs of stone that meet, that match, that, they don't necessarily match. It's, it's amazing, it really is, anyway.
Well, either way, now we have a good direction to, and turn this into a polished concrete floor as well, so I think what we're doing, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, let's go for security, I think that needs to be a priority. But also, as a part two and three simultaneously, floors and doors, and we're getting quotes off of those too, right? And we can use floors and doors as SPOS, and we can use security remaining ARPA funds and SPOS, does that make sense? Alright.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright, sounds like a game plan.
Perfect, so, um, Mayor's update, the only thing I have.
Um, sorry, my apologies, I've got.
I'm sorry.
No worries, I got a little bit more.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, computer quotes, another thing we went after was replacing the computers, at this point, I've got real angst about that, the guy, you know, we went, we talked to the guy for computers back in June, and he said, within a week we'll have a quote, in June, July, August, up until Friday last week at four thirty, so he finally called and asked the question, hey, where are we staying with the quote? As if he's waiting on us, after we've been chasing this guy around town, um, at this point, when I'm dealing with a person who's unresponsive and doesn't seem to understand anything, I just, mm, I, I don't wanna know, I don't really wanna go further with the guy, I've got other thoughts, I'll bring up Pius' policy later. Next is pavilion lighting out here, something you guys need to know, the pavilion where the picnic tables are, we're getting, uh, lighting bills, or electrical bills that are equivalent now to this whole town hall, we run this every single day, we have lights on, we have air conditioning going, something out there is triggering our electric, and our bill has skyrocketed, it's five times higher than what it normally is, um, we thought it might be an issue with their meters out there, we turned off all the power through the power breakers, soon as we did, uh, the, the bill stopped, I mean, they can literally say, the, you know, we turned off all the power breakers and there's no power charge, turn them back on, and this thing's blowing through the roof again, I don't know where that power charge is coming from, I just don't, so I, at this point, I'm thinking I'm gonna bring in somebody who can take a look at it and see where this is coming from, why it's an issue, because it went from about a hundred dollars a month to five hundred dollars out here for a place that has no air conditioning and gets used maybe four times, uh, four times a month.
Sounds like a bumble pile box.
Except, that's my first thought, but we've been running tests with Georgia Power, and their issue is they don't see it on their side, so I don't know, it still could be, but at this point, there's nothing that's obvious to me about why we're getting it, but we are getting it, so, yeah.
And you have it isolated to the pavilion?
Yes, yes.
Just the pavilion?
Yeah, we, we have it broken down to show like the, the days, and the times, and it's spiking in the middle of the week, not even on the weekends.
Right.
Not even to coincide with a, a weekend rental of the community center, it's like, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right, it's days whenever, we're literally here, and we can literally tell you nobody's out there.
Yeah.
And it spikes out, and, and just blows out, you know, electrical use, which, you know, translates into how much we're paying for it, and there's nothing that makes sense about it, doesn't make sense.
Any way somebody can tap into it?
I've thought about that, and the answer is, as far as I can tell, no, as far as I can tell, no, but that's why I'm sort of at a, and I'm not an electrician, but I'm sort of at a loss on what is causing that. But it's also hitting our line item on electrical costs.
Yeah.
And so whenever you see, perhaps at the end of the year, we've had a lot more electrical costs, now you're knowing what this is about, and we need to get that resolved.
I would think an electrician could, could go out there and spend an afternoon and figure it out.
I'm sorry?
I would think that an electrician could go out there in the afternoon and figure it out.
I would think so too, and I would love for them to go out there and say, here's the issue, here's the fix, right, 'cause right now, none of this is making sense to me.
Well, I can get, I, I know a guy that can look at it, we may not be able to fix it, but he would get it.
Yeah, no, he can get our.
We can get our, uh, Triple H guy to come out and take a look, I don't want you to see it, because again, bringing this guy out is gonna be unbudgeted, but also, if it's five times power expense, it's also unbudgeted. So it's hidden budget, so I just wanna make sure you guys are aware, um, GMA accomplished last study, uh, GMA has interviewed me and Julie and Angie, remember you guys approved at the last meeting. Um, they're working on it, they're working on their, um, suggestions or recommendations, and when I spoke to Terrell Jacobs of GMA earlier today, he says he anticipates having somebody from GMA come into our next meeting to discuss their findings, okay? So we have that, and then lastly, um, where you need to start working on the twenty twenty-five budget, annual budget, uh, I look to probably have a first projection to you guys in November, a first formal reading in December, of course, you approve them in January, uh, but if you have anything that you have in your mind that you'd like, and you need to start incorporating into the upcoming budget, please do let me know as well, okay? That's where we are.
Alright, um, so, uh, April was gonna be here this evening, but her husband's birthday was today, so she's not, um, the DDA has been, um, going through the submission of mottos for the town, and so you, you all each get emailed those, and I guess we'll have it on the next agenda for one to be selected, um, there were lots of them, but the, the DDA went through this morning and voted on like the top five, and it was pretty much the ones that were on there two and three times that people, you know.
It was in the paper also, there was an article in the, many times, several about it.
Yeah. Yeah, but it got to a point where people were pretty much submitting like the same things, so.
Yeah, she told me this morning that, 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 the, the list of five, that almost, I think, with three out of, most of the people in the DDA had agreed on at least the top three.
Yeah.
So.
Definitely.
They've, they've, they've called, they've gone through it extensively.
Yeah, some of them were really funny, but well, you guys will get the whole list of them, so you can laugh, cause. Yeah, that's it, we don't have executive session? Nope, alright.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Tom made a motion, Polly, agent second, on paper. Unanimous?
Owen, uh, yeah, you're good, I was just gonna say. With the, this approval of the furniture, of course, we're gonna be bringing it in and out, that may affect town hall operations, we're getting furniture in and out, I'll let you know how that works out more, 'cause we may have to have at least limited time to, you know, get the stuff coming and going, right, may have a little bit of operational hitch, but at the end of the day, it's all good.
Perfect.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Alright, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, man. What's up?
I love it, you know when I called to ask you for, I wanted to call and said I'm.
Go. Go ahead, sit down, get your call.
No, you have to.
Few minutes. I didn't hear three hundred. Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, okay, I thought you were throwing out something today. Yeah, it's all. Pardon?
Do we need to do comma there?
No.
I can't figure out why everybody's quit coming. Just to have so many people.
So, what, you know, what stuff is going on in your, your configuration, I mean, really, you're working with them, right?
I know, I saw it.